Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council Meeting of August 4th, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. On March 4th, 2020, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. We understand that many of the governor's executive orders related to COVID-19 have been rescinded or are due to expire soon. However, some orders remain in effect, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this one. And as such, Councilmember Parlier will be participating by phone tonight. And all council votes will be conducted by roll call. At this time, we have the pleasure of having our new Director of Recreation and Parks, Rick Anthony, offer the invocation, and then, following the invocation, Councilmember Gray will lead us in the pledge. Would you all please stand?
Father, we thank you for another day. We thank you for all that you have provided for us. Even the breath that we breathe is a gift from you. We acknowledge that we are stewards, Father, of all of your creation, and we pray for wisdom tonight for our leaders. We pray, Father, that every decision is weighted, Father God, out of compassion and love, and that your wisdom and your grace and your healing will continue to be for our leaders, for the city, and for this country. We love you, and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I declare allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, in the judicial, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by Resolution of the City Council on July 14th, 2021. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chamber being cleared. Continued disruption or harassment by any individual may be enforced as a misdemeanor in violation of Penal Code Sections 403, 415, 217.1, or any other applicable law. Welcome to all of you. We're really glad that you're here. Now we're going into public statements. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a speaker card and give it to the city clerk. Statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here on Consent Calendar Hearing Items 9A through C, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Again, please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off-topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Mayor Go, we've received eight speaker cards this evening, two regarding a single subject of e-bikes, and six regarding separate subjects.
Thank you. Go ahead and call the first speaker, please.
The first public speaker this evening is Tom Lingo.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Tom Lingo, born and raised in Bakersfield. I now live in Murrieta, California. But I've done over 40 developments in Kern County. Most of them have been affordable housing in the last 20 years. What I mean to talk about is basically TCC and what's going on now in the city and has been going on basically for the last four years, and just make some comments with regard to working together to try to get more affordable housing in central and southeast Bakersfield. I actually drove today the last affordable housing project that was completed in downtown Bakersfield I was part of, which is Park 20th, which is a 56-unit senior facility on 20th Street, just east of Central Park. The other projects that I completed, the last one I completed was the Camellias, actually in the county of Kern on Cottonwood Road. There's over, I think, 420 units there, both houses and apartments. And as far as I know, those are the last apartments built in southeast Bakersfield. And I just think it's a tragedy. I know that Bakersfield missed out on about $80 million worth of SGC money in 2015. That money ultimately went to Ontario at the corner of Holt in Euclid in Ontario, northeast corner. You can drive by and look at over 300 apartment units that were built with those dollars that originally were to become to Bakersfield and were rejected because we would not build in disadvantaged communities. I just find it, how can I put this? And I've said this in a number of meetings at the city, it's not about your need, it's not about the quality of the project, it's not about the location of the project, it's about the quality of the application. You can be the most needed community in California. If you cannot do an application and have everybody assembled together, transportation, public health, and all, put it all together and put together an application, you guys will not succeed. As far as I know, I'm the only developer, other than the Housing Authority, that has received SGC funds through Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities. I just finished 41 units in Lamont. It opened in October of 2015, and it was a two-year process, actually a three-year process. So just letting you know, that's where it is. I think you guys need to get out and lobby in Sacramento. And it's just, I know it's extremely tough on your guys' salary to take time to go to Sacramento, but man, you need to know these people and get to know these people in Sacramento so you know what you're doing, because it is a tough road, my friends.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Curtis Bingham. Welcome.
Honorable Mayor and our council, I'm Curtis James Bingham Senior, servant of our Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ. The Lord told us to bless our leaders, that would be you, chosen by our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ Himself and the people. I'd like to say again, I said it before, $15 million, which could easily be done, will correct a problem that we shouldn't have, and it'll make it better for the new council people to come in. $40,000 to each council person, $60,000 to the mayor, for $15 million, you can do that for 30 years, and we can always have a powerful council board. Redo the problem, the mistake that was made, giving the council nothing. I just heard this gentleman speak. If you guys can go on what you have. So the Lord just wants that said again, because He said his servant is worthy of his hire. Another thing the Lord would like to say, when somebody gonna vouch for you, hey, I think that person's okay. I think that person's okay. Thank you for being God we trust. Law enforcement is backed up and vouched for by Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ. Then Romans Chapter 13, the Lord called them His ministers three times. And when the Lord vouchs for you, that says something for you. The foundation of every city, the foundation of the world to hold it up in safety, is law enforcement. And that's why the Lord said you can receive condemnation if you don't respect them, honor them correctly. He's very serious, because we can't let evil get out of control. So when you see law enforcement come up and ask for something, you should feel really great about yourself, because you got a chance to say yes and help them. When they come through, law enforcement is so close to the Lord, a lot of people don't see it. We're going to a funeral with Deputy Campus Friday. When he was going out for them criminals, he wasn't going out, let me get the guy and shoot him, put him down. That wasn't his motivation. His motivation was if I get there and stop this guy for doing what he doing, his life could have been saved, his two sons' life could have been saved, his wife's life could have been saved, and he could have been living himself. Also, the Lord wants you to know Deputy Campus is not dead. You can't kill the spirit. I'm moving right now, but if God called me right now, my hands would go just like that, because the spirit comes out of me. That's what go back to the Lord. So according to his faith in the Lord, he's in a far better place than we are right now. The Lord just would have us, when law enforcement come through, please give them everything that you can give them to do what they want to do. We used to didn't have it, I know we need to have it. Now we got Measure N, and they are responsible, big portion of it, because when we were hauling for money to put them on the board, we put them on there. So let's always bless them for who they really are. They real, they true. If it wasn't for them, we couldn't do anything. Thank you, Honorable Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Next speaker, please.
Empress.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Of course. I knew she said she would have problems with the last name, and that's okay. It's Empress Noantuziki-Lelo, Zulu for Blessed Visionary. Total inclusion. Equality defined means the inclusion, means total inclusion, which translates into, colon, safe, clean, affordable, quality housing for all in the city, county, world, universe. Safe, clean, well-paved streets in all communities, neighborhoods, where seniors, children, and any pedestrians are not at risk from speeding cars, potholes, broken sidewalks, et cetera. And we are served not policed by our law enforcement and other departments. Safe, good, easy access, and viable transportation to clean, well-stocked markets, providing healthy food for spirit, mind, and body, and any other needed services. Safe, clean, well-manicured, green spaces, free from mine-numbing pollution. Safe, well-equipped schools, providing quality education versus prison pipelines and at-risk youth, giving us instead, at promise, producers, not products. These are some major asks for long-neglected disadvantaged areas, the southeast, east, Lamont, Arvin Taft, Rexland Acres, and others. There's monies available through transformative climate communities, Measure N, et cetera. We are asking a minimum of $10 million per year to bring these long-neglected areas up to par with other well-endowed communities, neighborhoods, thereby creating equality, total inclusion. Don't speak with your lips while your hearts continue to be far from us. Know with certainty, it is a new day. It is not business as usual. The status quo is no more. Purge the plague from the land by doing the right thing. And the gentleman that spoke first spoke about monies that were here in this community that we missed. We need to bring those monies back. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Empress. Next speaker, please. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Noantuziki-Lelo. I appreciate you and your comments today. I think many of us share your sentiments. We had a conversation just a week ago, and I wanted to ask staff if we can follow up with Ms. Noantuziki-Lelo regarding some of these street improvements and funding that we have in this year's budget for the area between California, East Truxton Union, and Brown Streets. So we are working on a program to, a project to improve a lot of those streets in that area. So if we can please refer back to her. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
O.C. Crawford.
Councilmembers and all. My name is O.C. Crawford. I'm with the True Love Tribe. And centering on me and my tribe, we wanted to do something for our community. I left Bakersfield many, many decades ago. When I came back, I kind of like fell in love with the city, and I started working with people, honoring citizens that were doing extraordinary things, making the city better, making connections better between the community and law enforcement and everybody. So we've had three awards banquet, and we're gonna have our fourth award banquet. We honored the extraordinary citizens first, and then I found out how hard the mayors and city officials work and what little pay they get. I say they really deserve to be honored. So we had held a banquet honoring all the mayors in Kern County, and several came, including Mayor Go, and some of the council members attended. So this next banquet, happening on September 18th, will be honoring the law enforcement. I know Karen goes, one of her goes, is to bring about better relations between the community and law enforcement, and this banquet will do that. We hope will help in that direction to a large extent. And we're still waiting for more officers to be nominated. We have some, but we would like to get as many as we can. We want to really support them and let them know that the community is with them. And we know all law enforcement is not perfect, just like probably none of us are, but most of us are doing the best that we can with what the knowledge we have. We are doing the best. So I would just like to invite you all to come. I can send another reminder, but I did send one, and I know some people can't make it, they would be out of town. But anyway, I would love to see you all there if you can come. If there's any question, I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford, and thank you for the generous generosity of your family in caring for us, and we appreciate what you've done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Gray.
O.C., I'd like to ask a couple of questions of you. Is this open to the public?
Yes.
Okay.
We've lacked reservations. It's gonna be at hotels, so we would like to have some idea of how many people would be there so we can have the right amount of food.
Okay. So how would they contact you if they'd like to participate?
Well, I sent out emails to, you know, the city council members and mayors, and friends, and, yeah, just friends that I know.
Okay. So if the public wanted to attend, how would they go about doing that?
I guess they would have to be invited.
Oh, okay. All right. That's what I wanted to find out. All right. Well, thank you. We appreciate what you're doing for our officers and for other leaders in the community. I'm just really blessed, and I apologize, and I'm not able to attend, but I'm very grateful for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray, Mr. Crawford and his family fund this event, so it's very generous of them to invite us. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Go, the following two speakers will be speaking on e-bikes. The first speaker, Marcy Cunningham.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Marcy Cunningham, and I wish to continue speaking on the e-bike issue and give you some history of equestrian trails along the Kern River Corridor. The Kern River Plan, EIR, which allowed the establishment of the Parkway, and the Kern River Specific Trails Plan delineate equestrian trails throughout the Kern River Corridor on their documents, which can be viewed at the Kern River Parkway website, kernriverparkway.org. From Manor Street West to Enos Lane, maps show the equestrian trail on both sides of the river until the River View Weir, where the trail moves to the north side of the river. The equestrian trail on the Kern River Specific Trails Plan, which covers Manor Street, east to Rancheria Road, starts on the north side of the river and crosses to the south side at the Rocky Point Weir. Under the Kern River Specific Trails Plan adopted in September 2003, the following is included. Three types of trail use will be facilitated by the trail system: pedestrian, bicycle, and equestrian. Several different combinations of those types have led to the design of the Kern River Trail System, which include: 1) Bicycle/Equestrian/Pedestrian Multi-Use Trail; 2) Bicycle/Pedestrian Multi-Use Trail; 3) Walking/Hiking Trail; 4) Equestrian Trail. It is important to note that the Kern River Bike Trail provides connectivity for bicyclists, allowing them to follow the Kern River with no impediments. Horses are not allowed on the Kern River Bike Trail. To protect the safety of equestrians, the 950 signers of the petition delivered to council members on June 16th request that e-bikes not be allowed on any trails with equestrian designation as noted on the Kern River Plan Element and the Kern River Specific Trails Plan. Most of these trails are within the primary and secondary floodplain. I would be happy to address any concerns and answer any questions council members have on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Next speaker, please.
Marian Vargas. Good afternoon. My name is Marian Vargas. I want to speak about equestrian trails, e-bikes, and the floodplain. Class 1 and 2 e-bikes travel on Kern River Parkway trails. With the introduction of the bike-share program and growing popularity of e-bikes, it is expected that the number of e-bikes using these trails will increase exponentially. While it may improve transportation options and connectivity for e-bikes to be used on the Kern River Bike Trail, it is not appropriate for them to be ridden on our community's historical equestrian trails within the primary and secondary floodplains of the Kern River. For the safety of all, horses were prohibited from using the paved bike trail. Likewise, for the safety of users and protection of habitat, motorized vehicles were prohibited from the primary and secondary floodplains. While e-bikes may have been reclassified by the state as bicycles, the fact is that they are motorized, and when used off-pavement, still present the same hazards that led to the prohibition of motorized vehicles on the floodplain. Those well-known hazards include collisions and injuries that can occur from mixing different modes of travel and speed on the same trail, as well as damage to vegetation and wildlife habitat that results from off-road vehicular use. For the common good and safety of equestrians, hikers, pedestrians, joggers, and cyclists, and to protect natural habitat of the Kern River Corridor, we have two requests. First, we are requesting that the City of Bakersfield update its Floodplain Ordinance 10.82 to prohibit electric bicycles and other electrically-motorized modes of transportation from operating on the primary and secondary floodplains of the Kern River. Second, we are requesting that the City of Bakersfield, by ordinance, prohibit e-bikes from any trail designated for equestrian use by the Kern River Plan Element and the Kern River Specific Trails Plan. We have addressed this issue at every regular City Council meeting since May 5th with public statements, letters, emails, petitions, and phone calls to you, our representatives. We hope that you will take action to address our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Vargas, for coming. I think you guys have been coming for the past three months, becoming regulars. So thank you, guys, for your advocacy. I think this is an important issue, and I think, you know, as we make frankly historic investments in our Kern River Parkway, that we get it right the first time, and that we make sure that there's adequate enforcement to make sure that all the laws that we codify and all the laws that are already on the books are actually followed through on. And so with that, Christian, I know that this issue was in one of the committees. I can't remember which one off the top of my head, but could you speak to the timeline of when that might come before council?
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. This was referred to the Legislation and Litigation Committee. There was actually a specific ordinance proposal, but they did not proceed forth out of committee. And so that topic is actually not re-agendized for further action in committee at this point. It was a distinct topic that would have allowed Class 3 e-bikes and other electrically-motorized vehicles to be on the multi-use path. So this request is distinct about prohibitions to equestrian trails on the floodplain. So there's not pending action to that specific point, and I would suggest that as this topic has been discussed at length, it's been more and more refined to really what are the issues and those issues that have been adequately addressed in ordinance. And so the specific comments made today, I think, are sort of new and distinct requests that are not addressed by current initiatives of staff.
Councilmember Arias, do you have further comment? Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. So this issue continues to come up at City Council. We discussed it in committee and legislative. I was part of that discussion. I just want to clarify for the benefit of the full council, and Jenny, if you can help me out here, just to verify. So currently, there are no ordinances on the books that codify any designated use in the floodplain or on floodplain trails. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, if I could state it another way, perhaps? My understanding is, is that the only thing on the books regarding the floodplain is that there are no motorized vehicles allowed in the primary and secondary floodplain. And I think where the speakers that came up, I think the confusion lies in the fact that we have an ordinance right now that does not allow, does not allow motorized vehicles on the Kern Bike Trail. And the state came in and said that motorized vehicles does not include Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes. So right now, even though we have a code that says no motorized vehicles are allowed on the trail, Class 1 and Class 2 are allowed. So a Joe Dokes that wants to look up the code may not know what the state did, because we did not opt out, nor did the council at the time that law was passed have a discussion. So I think there's some in the community that are concerned that because there's that lack of clarity in the code, that when you then go to the primary and secondary floodplain where it says no motorized vehicles are allowed in the code, that automatically that means that Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes are allowed in the primary. So a Joe Dokes that wants to look up the code may not know what the state did, because we did not opt out, nor did the council at the time that law was passed have a discussion. So I think there's some in the community that are concerned that because there's that lack of clarity in the code, that when you then go to the primary and secondary floodplain, where it says no motorized vehicles are allowed in the code, that automatically that means that Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes are allowed in the primary floodplain, because they are not considered motorized under state definition. What the state did is basically said, any place you can ride a regular bicycle that you and I grew up with, you can ride a Class 1 and a Class 2. So if the council wanted to kind of deal with the floodplain issue, and you wanted to send it back to Legonlet, that's certainly something that you can do, but that, again, is, that's up to council.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. I'm Eddie Lane. During the last few years, several members of the Sierra Club, Kern, Weir Chapter, and I have appeared before your Public Safety and Vital Services Committee and before this council regarding issues related to City Bakersfield Parks. We were delighted to read about the city's plans to use major in money to clean up the Kern River Parkway. Several members of this council and Mayor Go have spent time, which I'll call sweat equity, in the Parkway cleanups or in other working sessions along the river. I'm going to attempt to show some pictures this spring from San Miguel Grove, which is a city park. Let me go kind of quickly here. You'll get the idea. Ah, that works better. Again, this is San Miguel Grove. You can see the fire damage. Same thing. This is a big cleanup day in April. There's the mayor. Here's a councilman with sweat equity there. Here's some of the trash they collected, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pounds. There's one of the volunteer pickup vehicles. And this is a vehicle that was hauled away. Let's be honest, this portion of the Grove looks like a dump, and it's not alone. As we've repeatedly pointed out, other portions of the Parkway along the river have also been trashed. This includes the uplands of a Kern, another city park. Because of seemingly permanent homeless encampments, it is not safe for the public to use these portions of the Parkway. This includes those who ride on the bike path and those who use the trails. Illicit drug sales and usage is uncommon, and sadly, the physical and mental capacities of many of those who live almost permanently along the river have been altered by drugs. Repairian habitat has been destroyed. It's been heartbreaking. We were recently informed that the city's plan to clean up the Parkway only would include trash along the bike path. This defies common sense. A clean city of Bakersfield bike path with dangerous barking dogs, filthy and dangerous homeless encampments, and a trashed river just a few feet away? This plan needs to be looked at again, seriously. I hope that this plan will be, which I've considered to be ill-conceived, will be revisited and revised. City parks and trails along the Kern River and the full Parkway need to be made safe and clean for the public again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Next speaker, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Clegg or Mr. Anthony, can we provide some clarification on the extent to which the cleanup crews can go in and address some of those efforts there?
Yeah, I think a council member and through the chair apologize if there's been confusion with our community partners about the different elements of this plan. We had recently communicated that our Clean City Team, and these are homeless center clients that are picking up litter and debris, will be dedicated and limited to trash along the trail and just adjacent to the trail. However, there are multiple other facets to our proposal. We are going to staff up a fourth rapid-response team, and they'll be responsible to go out and notify and clean up encampments throughout the Kern River Parkway area. Will be a team dedicated to the Kern River Parkway area. We also will have a dedicated outreach team that's going and reaching out to individuals in these encampments and trying to place them into services and into shelters and addressing some of those needs and challenges that were referenced. And we're also going to be funding a bike patrol from private security that will be going up and down the Kern River Parkway Trail. So there are multiple facets to the plan. The first and the fastest that we could deploy was this additional team, Clean City Team. We're actually hiring a second Clean City Team just for the Parkway. And then it will take us some time to staff up that fourth rapid-response team, and we're working on a scope to bid out for the security piece, but multiple components of this plan are coming forward, not just litter and debris along the trail itself.
So just to clarify, the rapid-response team that's coming onboard, they will have access and the ability to go into the riverbed as well as the bike path in order to clean up debris and other trash?
Correct, council member. This council, as part of the budget proposal, approved actually atypical equipment that was in addition to what our current rapid-response teams have, so that we could get folks out into those hard-to-access areas. And so we'll have, I mean, the authority exists, but we're creating the capacity to do that. And I would say as well, the outreach component is really important, because we want to get at the underlying issues and connect people to services and ultimately get them into supportive and permanent housing. That's the long-term goal. And we've actually been working with additional partners that provide medical care to individuals in the same area and trying to partner with them. We've been working with behavioral health services at the county with a new project that they have, where they're trying to connect individuals increasingly that have those more acute mental health challenges to the services that are available to them. So it has to be a multifaceted approach.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gray.
Mr. Lane, I appreciate you coming and speaking to us tonight. I can assure you, unfortunately, I wasn't part of that cleanup day. I wish I had been, but I have walked the San Miguel Grove, and I realized the mess, and I was just, I was so set back by it, I couldn't believe what I was looking at. But we, I just want to assure you that this council has really put this as a priority this year, when we put our agenda together, we put our budget together, rather. We made it a priority to start cleaning that up, because as I go into other cities and I'm seeing their bike trails, and, you know, it's kind of, that's something that's so special to Bakersfield. And so there's not one of us on the council that has not taken this seriously. And as you can see, homelessness is just growing in the state of California faster than we can, you know, put a cap on it. It's very, of anything that we deal with at the city right now, homelessness is probably the most frustrating area, because we want to be compassionate, we want to reach out to these people. And having these behavioral health people, Flood Ministries, this collaborative that we've put, the city staff has worked very hard at putting together, we are working on solutions, and we're putting the money where our mouth is. So I just want to encourage you with that. It's going to take some time. This isn't going to happen overnight, but we are very committed to getting the city cleaned up and to find other solutions for the problem that we're facing. So thank you. We appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Mr. Clegg, certainly the cleanliness of our city is a priority for our residents. What can we do to better communicate the information so that they are not confused with the various teams? And I don't have to answer that right away, but let's reflect and let's figure out a strategy to be able to reach a wider swath of our public so that they have a clear understanding of the efforts that are being made and those that will be forthcoming. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Coe, before I announce our final speaker for the evening, a staff memorandum has been provided to the council tonight, transmitting additional email comments submitted. Our final public speaker this evening is Emma De La Rosa.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Emma De La Rosa, policy advocate with Leadership Council. I'm just here to follow up on the conversation we had about the Housing Trust Fund program. I know Councilmember Freeman had some questions in regards to what the eligible activities were, and I wanted to provide an answer, but I see that he's not here. Regardless, the eligible, the activities that we included in our comment letter are activities that have come from community members as priorities. And just to refresh our memories a little bit, I did include first-time homebuyer assistance along with rehabilitation of homes and weatherization programs, anything that has to do with low-income housing assistance. And so I had a quick follow-up question, if it's possible to get an answer today. If not, maybe via email. I wanted to ask if the city did apply for the local housing trust fund through HCD. And also, I wanted to follow up on council members' direction to engage with Leadership Council. We are anxiously awaiting to work with you all to ensure that we include community priorities in this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa. Mr. Clegg, would you be able to just clarify the application process, please?
Absolutely. A couple other thoughts. The city has applied for the $5 million match in Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars. And the applications were just due yesterday, in fact, and so we don't anticipate hearing back from the state immediately, but the application has been completed. Also, economic and community development staff have been directed to respond to the referral and reaching out to the Leadership Council. I would also just reflect really quickly that I reviewed the letter from Leadership Council. I was absent at our last meeting. And all of the items that were recommended to be included in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund eligible projects, with actually the exception of some of those mentioned today in rehab and weatherization and first-time homebuyer programs, there were a number of other categories recommended as criteria. And in the resolution that council adopted on July 14th, it included the criteria that were for the program and those eligible projects, and there was significant alignment with the recommendations from the Leadership Council, and that is publicly available. And we'll be actually following up with a summary memo to highlight what those criteria are for council in response to that referral. We've had some discussion about the good feedback about first-time homebuyer and rehabilitation. It's not as focused as some of the other affordable housing type, project types, and some of those have been funded through other funding sources, but we're going to take a look at that and see, you know, are there opportunities to identify further funding sources and prop up those types of programs. But the other items listed are absolutely part of our criteria, and the many types of good affordable housing projects, we anticipate funding from the trust fund.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AG for approval. A staff memorandum was received regarding item 8S, transmitting the Bakersfield City School District Board Agenda Item printout, showing the agreement was approved and advising the signed agreement was not available at the time of the publication of the agenda.
Does any council member wish to recuse themselves for any of the items? Does any council member wish to pull an item for separate consideration? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent calendar items 8A through 8AG.
Thank you. You have a motion? For this roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Weir. Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Freeman? Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir and councilmembers Bob Smith and Bruce Freeman absent.
Thank you. It's now time for the consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under consent calendar hearing in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearing portion of the meeting. So at this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearing items 9A through C. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony only to remove the matter from the consent calendar Seeing none, does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar Seeing none, at this time, consent calendar public hearing items 9A through C is closed. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to approve consent calendar hearing items 9A through 9C.
Thank you. You have a motion? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Weir. Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Freeman? Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
And Councilmember Parlier?
Councilmember Parlier?
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir and councilmembers Smith and Freeman absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor statements.
What about hearings? Number 10?
No.
Oh, there aren't any. Council and mayor statements. Colleagues, any statements? Councilmember Gray?
I have a couple of things I'd like to share tonight. First of all, I was watching a newscast of another city council, and I noticed that on the back of their dais, they didn't have a beautiful "In God We Trust" like we have. So I want to say, as a city councilwoman, I'm very thankful that our city honors God in this place where very, very important decisions are made. So that's the first thing that I wanted to say. It's been on my heart ever since I saw that newscast. The second thing is, is the affordable housing. I had the privilege last week to go to ribbon-cutting at 119 L Street, and along with my other colleagues here on the dais tonight. And when you take time to get behind the stories of the people that are being, having the opportunity to live in the affordable housing, it just really tore at my heartstrings, and I was so blessed to meet a couple of families that had extremely adverse situations in their life, and they were now into a beautiful home, 500 square foot. We're in kitchen and bath design, as you know, and I walked in, I said, wow, this is really nice. White shaker cabinets, luxury vinyl plank flooring, barn door into the bathroom. I was like, you know, they did this right. So these people are living in a place where they, again, have dignity, and I am very excited of what the city is doing this year, the money that is being appropriated. We talked about that earlier. But if there's anything that our city manager, Christian Clegg, would like to add into that, I welcome that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray, for an open-ended question, because there's good information around this. I just want to reflect really quickly that most cities do not have the opportunity to spend general fund resources on projects like affordable housing. It's very much limited to those funds that come from the federal government, from the state government, and we also leverage state and federal dollars as much as possible. There's going to be significant funding coming from the state for affordable housing and for homelessness in this coming year because of the state's surplus. But it's worth stopping and reflecting for a moment that, in the last two years, the city has spent $9 million of our own general fund money on affordable housing. We've budgeted $6 million in affordable housing this coming year. $5 million of that comes from our general fund. On the same token, around homelessness, we're spending close to $11 million a year as a city on homelessness. It would not be possible without Measure N. So we're fortunate to get at these tough issues with the new resources, but we're being very strategic. We're putting those resources to their greatest effect and impact on the priority issues of the city. And I think you're right, some of the outcomes, we're still yet to see all the value that it will add to us. But we're very fortunate to put our money where it matters and pursue these affordable housing. And the $5 million match for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund would also not be possible had we not had $5 million of our own dollars to match it with from Measure N. So hopefully, we double our money. We think our application is strong, and we'll be successful with the state. We'll have $10 million this year to address affordable housing. And the American Rescue Plan Act funds, there's $94.5 million. We anticipate at least $10 million being recommended to council to be spent on affordable housing in the next three to six years as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart to the gentleman to my right, Mr. Stew. Thank you for everything that you have done for the carnation tract there just west of Union, south of Ford Street. I think your teams were able to grind down and repave First, Second, Third Street, V Street, T Street, and I know I'm missing a couple of others. But I just want to tip my hat off to you and to your entire team. And I ask that you give my sincerest of thanks to Mr. Peoples and his entire team. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment to the general public and the citizens of Bakersfield real quick. Tonight, the city council approved an agreement between the Bakersfield Police Department and Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services for the purposes of a behavioral health clinician to work with law enforcement and our communications center to provide behavioral health responses when folks call into 911. So we have an appropriate response to those who are, who are living with mental health issues. I think this is a huge step forward for our community, and I think it should be celebrated. I also would note that it's a $135,000 contract that is paid for and funded by PSVS, the Public Safety and Vital Services Initiative. And thank God for Measure N. I thank the community, the residents, the voters of Bakersfield for supporting Measure N. Several of the major issues we talked about tonight, including this contract, including Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the $5 million that we're investing, including the rapid response teams at San Miguel Grove and the Kern River Parkway, all of those things, all of those things were funded by PSVS. We would not be having these conversations tonight, having these great conversations about how to spend dollars if it wasn't for the voters who elected to approve the PSVS in 2018. So thank God for that. Thank God we're in a good position as a city. I think it's something that we need to continue to celebrate. Of course, there's a lot of debates and challenges and things that we need to overcome, and we're working on it. But I think it's important to remember where we are today because of the voters in 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. We lost a tremendous public servant recently, Deputy Philip Compass. There's been such an outpouring of love, caring, and expressions of how professional the deputy was. And we have the honor of celebrating his life tomorrow. When I spoke with our district attorney on Sunday, she was so complimentary of the Bakersfield Police Department for supporting the Sheriff's Department. I want to say thank you for all that the Bakersfield Police Department officers did in collaborating with the Sheriff's Department during a time of tremendous grief. I had the privilege of attending two vigils this last week, and you can just see the major impact, both professionally and personally, that the deputy made on our community and upon all those who got to know him. So tonight, in closing the meeting at 6:10, we'll do this in memory of Deputy Philip Compass. The meeting's adjourned.